All right. Thank you, Brian, and welcome, everybody, to this July 25, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We don't have any proclamations or announcements tonight, so we'll go ahead and open this meeting and call it to order. And we're going to start with an invocation from Mr. Gualtney, I believe, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
My goodness. Thank you, Lord, gracious God, for the opportunity to come together tonight. Thank you for the ability from each of us to come into this room and serve. Lord, let us be mindful that every day is a gift, every breath that we breathe is a gift from you. Allow and help us move forward each day. Thank you for this wonderful community, the great neighbors that we serve. Thank you, Lord, for the wonderful city employees that are dedicated and help move the city forward. Lord, thank you for these individuals on this dience and in front of us that help us make the correct decisions. Lord bless us with wisdom and patience and attitude of gratitude. Lord, as we go out this evening, watch over us and be with us this evening and be grateful.
Amen.
Everyone will face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Gualtney. All right. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Nels?
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Okay, you got two absent, but you got a quirk.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of July 11, 2022. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine, those are approved, nine to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. I guess we'll start with the Historic Preservation Commission. I know we have a Ward II position. I don't know, Ms. Smith, are you going to handle this or y'all?
You want me to do it? Okay. We interviewed two really exceptional candidates last week for the Ward II spot on the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission and really want both of them to serve on the, on the commission. So to that end, tonight, I would like to nominate Enslyn Crowe to the Ward II position to replace Will Womack, who has rolled off. Enslyn is a local attorney and actually a former history teacher, also former president of the Homewood City Schools Foundation. So she's going to bring a lot of really good skills and leadership to the commission. So I'd like to make that nomination now.
Second.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that is nine to zero. Ms. Salter, if you will, let Ms. Crowe know.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Smith, do you have another related item?
And then to continue, after our interviews, I was informed by Jake Collins that he is going to be rolling off the commission. Jake currently serves in one of our at-large spots, and he has been an amazing asset to the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission. His depth and breadth of knowledge of Homewood history has just been an absolute boon for the commission. And he assures me that he is going to continue to be our on-call history expert. But I would like to open his spot on the commission and leave that open until Monday, August the 8th, which I believe is our first August meeting at 4:30 PM. And the other candidate who interviewed last week was Sydney Simmons, who is also a resident of Ward II. And I would like to hold her application for this position. And she is just really incredible. She grew up here. I think she has a lot to add. She actually has experience with historic tax credits, which is something that's very complex and not a lot of people have that knowledge. So I would like to hold Sydney's application for this new spot that has opened up and close that spot on Monday, August the 8th at 4:30.
All right. Then we will go ahead and do that. We will open that up until August 8th at 4:30. For anyone that wants to apply, just submit that to the city clerk's office, and we will hold Ms. Simmons' information from this previous one and have her just as already applied.
Thank you.
And President Wyatt, just note for the record, Counselor Nels is here. So that now makes it T and present.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we had two beautification board positions, one at large and one Ward II that closed today, but we did not receive any applications. Mr. Sims, you want to reopen that for two weeks? Is that right? Four weeks. I apologize. Four weeks. Yeah. So we'll, we'll keep that open until August 22nd at 4:30 for both the at-large and Ward II place. And then lastly, we have the Mental Health Authority appointment as an at-large position. That also closed today, and we did not get any applications. So I would, I'm going to reopen that also to August 22nd at 4:30. All right. One addition to the agenda tonight is going to be in addition to committee referral agenda 170722, Request to Authorize the Mayor to Sign a Contract for Services for Fiscal Year 2122 for the Bell Center and Pay Fiscal Year 2122 Budget Appropriations, brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter. This is something that's in the budget. We just got the invoice from them and need that handled, so that'll go to finance.
I just want to.
With, with that, I would entertain a motion and second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, 10 to zero. We don't have any items on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to old business. 050522, Request a Set of Public Hearing for Vacation of Right-Away at 16th Street Adjacent to 2901 Central Avenue, brought to us by Lee &amp; Chelsea Maniscalco and Wyatt Pugh. We're going to carry that item over again while we see what additional information comes to us in committee next week. Next item, 100522, Public Hearing Set for September 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM to Consider Annexation into the City of Homewood for 314 Happy Lane, brought to us by Ketchum Properties and Melody Salter and Robert Brigitte. So we will carry that item over for the public hearing on the 12th of September. Next item, 060622, Public Hearing Set for August 8, 2022, at 6:00 PM to Consider Amending the City's Zoning Ordinance to Include Fence Ordinance, the Defense Ordinance, brought to us by Counselor Andrus and Cale Smith. We will carry that item over for our public hearing on August 8. Next item, 180622, Public Hearing Set for Tonight for Consideration of Condemnation of the Dwelling Structure at 2916th Place South, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met on July 18th, and after hearing from Mr. Pugh, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded in by Counselor Harden.
Thank you very much. All right. So with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing. Mr. Smith, are you speaking to this tonight? I know Mr. Pugh is out of town.
Yes, and I'm not salty about that at all. Apparently, he's on, he's on a boat.
You'd much rather be doing this.
So you get me instead. The house was first identified in 2018 as unsafe, and in 2021, the house deteriorated to the point where the abatement board evaluated the dilapidation of the house. Also, in March of '21, an unsafe structure notice was sent certified mail, and it was returned unopened. So put some, the timeline and the unsafe condition report at each of your seats, so you can flip through the pictures. Brian also has some pictures on the screen.
All right. And so we've handled all of our notice requirements and everything with this?
Yes.
And, and obviously, and I know that Mr. Pugh is doing this, believes that there's, the position of the office upstairs is that this is an unsafe condition?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask you a question quick, Andy?
Yes, ma'am.
When, what was, when did we take down the garage in the back?
I believe it was about two years ago.
Two years ago. Okay.
And, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Gualtney.
I was going to also acknowledge that, that this, this property has been a habitual offender in a variety of ways, whether it's public nuisance for overgrowth of the yard or the structure behind the house has been torn down in the last two years. There's currently a vacated car that is, all four tires are flat. This is, you know, an eyesore in the neighborhood. There's lots of kids playing around here, and I believe we need to move forward with condemnation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gualtney, was that a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a motion for Mr. Gualtney and a second for Ms. Gier. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and will be Resolution 22117. All right. That brings us to our next item, 190622, Public Hearing Set for Tonight for Consideration of Condemnation of Dwelling Structure at 137 West Glenwood Drive, also brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Public Safety. Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met on July 18th and heard from Mr. Pugh on this item as well. The committee then voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing, and the motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded in by Counselor Harden.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gualtney. So with that, I will open this public hearing and again ask Mr. Smith to step up and tell us about this one.
So, once again, you have the timeline and the unsafe conditions report at your seats. This one, a building permit was taken out in March of 2019, and then apparently very little work was done over the course of two years. In March of this year, the abatement board heard Mr. Roberts and, and some neighbors, and again in May, and then again in June, they decided to send it to you guys. So here we are. Over the past couple of weeks, some work has been done on the house. The tarp on the roof has been replaced with a metal roof, I think, that's been screwed in to prevent rain from entering the structure. There, I think, are still holes in the structure that allow pests and children that were interested to get inside, so.
Okay. So we're still at a point of where the opinion is that it's unsafe?
Yes.
Okay. And we've also handled all our notice requirements with regard to this one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I know there may be some people here to speak to this one tonight. Let me just start by saying, I know we got two or three emails that have, that have been circulated and, and have been made a part of the record as well. So those will be, be included in the record. But is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? Feel free to come on up. And if you will, just sign in. There's a sign-in sheet at the podium.
I'm Mike Roberts. I own the property. It is true. Some of the stuff is not here to debate. We did get a permit late March, and then I started contracting, and we finally had contractors starting to show up. The roof is on. We have a few pieces of metal had to be rebuilt for a special transition. We've, we had a lot of, a lot of damage to the house, and it's, you know, from water, and we had to do substantial work inside the house. And those pictures that you're looking at are probably a couple of weeks old. The roof, we just put 50 sheets of plywood on the roof. The house is totally under construction, and we would like to have been done with it sooner, but just to the due of labor and people showing up on time, and it's just been a struggle. But we are, we're progressing. The house will be painted probably in about two weeks, finished outside. And the inside is, probably like the inside, is just mechanicals and finishing up.
Just to, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, it's fine.
Mr. Roberts, just to make sure I understand, the permit you pulled in late March, was that the second permit for this house?
Over the history of the house or just since, since the dance, since everything happened, second one? Yes, sir.
Since any time that you've been working on this house, how many permits?
Well, I've owned the house since 2006. I've pulled three, three permits over the past 10-plus years.
Okay. All right.
The, the one permit from 2019 was voided.
Yes, that was.
For inactivity.
Right.
And that, that's true. Yes, that was voided. We had a, the city, we had started remodel project, and then the city came in with the EPA, and they made me raise the house. Now, that took like $35,000 on our budget and really stopped the house. We did get the house raised, and we got it in the dry, and then, you know, then COVID happened and all the other stuff happened in the world. And I'm not here to make excuses. I'm just trying to tell you that the house, the house is in really good shape. And Bobby, the inspectors have been out there a couple of times. Look, I see the work we're doing. I know that we missed a deadline on the, set by the abatement people, but it was non-intentional. It's just, just the way things worked out.
Didn't, didn't you show up at that meeting?
I did. Yes, sir. I didn't. They wanted me to come and make a second meeting, but at the, the notice, the, the time they give you notice to get there, I was out of town for one of them. The last one, I never did get the notice.
Here's the problem.
Yes, sir.
Your house has been disrepair for three years now.
I understand.
And it's, it's got to be affected by mold.
Well, we've already eliminated it. That was one of the big projects.
We're going to need some proof of elimination.
Well, there's a company called Pure that's going to be given a certification.
Have them send us a letter saying that there's no mold presence in that letter. Otherwise, you can't go forward with that permit.
There is no mold in the house. It is not complete. We demoed, we demoed three dumpsters with.
All you need to do.
You're telling me I can't work on a house because it had mold in it?
Let me, let me just speak to you very directly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a mess. And you've created the mess.
Yes, sir.
And it's an abatement problem unless there's a proof of mold in that house through an abatement company that's certified to give those, you're not going to be able to move forward with that.
It cannot be abated. The house is in the total dry.
It can be abated. You've got to have proof that there's no mold in the house.
I think what Mr. Kendrick is saying, that there needs to be some proof that there's no mold.
I understand that, but you're asking for proof right now, and I don't have that.
You told us that it's, that it's secure?
It is secured.
Well, then, then there should be no problem getting a mold abatement report. It's either secure or it's not. The problem is this.
The house is secured. You can't, unless you, unless you're trespassing on my property, then the house is secure. There's locks, the windows are door, the lock, everything is locked. The house has been that way from the get-go. It's never been exposed.
Based on the pictures that we have, look at that.
We've got some pictures that say differently. That's the problem.
Let's show the pictures. I'm just trying to tell you. I mean, we're talking about, that house is secure. That is a foundation due to, due to flood. We had to bring that up like that. It will have, that is not.
Look at that picture.
Yeah. That's when we, that's this last week when we were taking off the roof.
Well, you don't think mold created by raining? It's been that way for months.
That's the reason we took the roof off, was to eliminate the damage in the mold.
Okay. Hang on. All right. Ms. Smith?
Because I've been dealing, this is in my ward, the house is in my ward, and I have been communicating with the neighbors for quite a long time about this. And the problem is, the damage was done, you didn't take the roof off. There were windows open for long periods of time.
No, there was, there was no windows open.
I'm, I'm, you're wrong. There were. I mean, I've had multiple neighbors tell me that the, the windows have been open for long periods of time. Animals can get in. Some, I guess a kid, if he was really brave, could probably crawl in a window. And then the roof was exposed for long periods of time, allowing rain and everything else to get inside. And I know now you have, because I know the day after the, the notice went out, there were roofers out there. I drove by, I saw them. But I, I think the problem is, this process has taken three years, and we're still here. And I think the neighbors are frustrated. I think the neighbors are, we have the people who live next door who aren't here tonight. They sent letters to our city clerk. They moved back intentionally to this street, and this is what they've been living next to for the last three years, since they've been back in town. So I think the problem is, while you are making progress, not enough progress has been made to satisfy the people who live on this street and have had to deal with this for the last three years.
Lord of the city.
All right. Is there anybody else here to speak for or against this item?
Well, you don't talk to me.
Yeah. You, do you have a question for him before you sit down? Okay. You're welcome to sit down.
Good afternoon, councilors. Thank you for having us today. My name's Jesse Cash. I'm the owner at 136 West Glenwood Drive, just across the street from this property. Here to speak on behalf of almost 20 other property owners in this area, that for the last several years, I know we've talked about a 2019 permit. I've actually spoken with neighbors who've lived here longer that, you know, mentioned that this house, I heard from one neighbor, this house is in a constant state of remodel, and it's been that way for longer than just three years. But I don't, I don't know that, because I just moved here. It's just interesting to hear these types of things. My neighbors and I live on a beautiful street, and I think one of the best neighborhoods in America, with an abandoned structure on it. It's been this way for a long time. There, we're happy, really happy to see some activity that's taken place in the last couple of weeks since this council set this for public hearing. I, I wish that I could convince myself with all of my power of positivity that this is a sign of things to come, instead of what my logical brain tells me and my neighbors, that this is, that the work that was done in the last 14 days was, was nothing more than an effort to prevent this council from doing what we believe that it's called to do, which is to vote to condemn this property. This property is not fit to be occupied by human beings. It, maybe while there has been an effort to secure the property or make it safe, because it has been in such a state of disrepair for as long as it has been, I, if you just put some insulation and sheetrock inside, I wouldn't live there. I wouldn't let my kids live there. I wouldn't even want a stranger to live there due to what's going on inside this home. We're, you know, we really would like to see a finished property that another family can live in and be our neighbors. And we just don't think, at this stage, that there is any desire by the property owner to complete this property. I think the desire is to somehow stave off what really needs to happen, is its condemnation. And I don't know why, because I don't have an all-seeing eye. Is there, are there creditors that, that can be pushed away if this is the business owner's personal homestead? Maybe. Are there insurmountable obstacles that exist in the form of, you know, never realistically being able to obtain a certificate of occupancy? I don't know that for sure. I'm not a structural engineer. But what I do know, what my neighbors know, is that we have no confidence whatsoever that if this council votes, decides not to condemn this property and allows this property to continue in this current state, we don't have any confidence or faith that any additional work to actually remodel this property or legitimately advance it to a point where it could be inhabited by human beings will be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that's here to speak to this item?
Good afternoon. I will be short, because it is clear that you are all very aware of the condition of the property. My name is Rachel Cash. I also live at 136 West Glenwood. I want to say thank you, Barry, for putting up with all of my emails. I just want to reiterate that this has been an ongoing situation where there was no activity on the house for years, and then the only activity that occurred was after we finally got on the abatement board's agenda. After that, there was a flurry of work. It ceased after that meeting, and for the last 90 days, once again, nothing happened until it was set for this meeting this evening. So I would reiterate, reiterate what Jesse said, that we are, we, and I speak on behalf of multiple other neighbors, we do not feel confident that any additional work will be done should the city not vote to take action. And I know Mr. Roberts mentioned financial hardships and COVID, and I understand that, and this is not anything personal against him. One thing that I think is worth noting, and you may or may not be aware, is that the house was up for sale for some time. It was listed for, I think, $700,000 as a build-to-suit. I spoke with one of the real estate agents who lives behind the house on East Glenwood, and she was very clear that Mr. Roberts was not willing to take any negotiation off of that sales price, that he was not making a good faith effort to sell the property then. So while I think that the financial concerns are something to be noted, and I understand that, I also think that maybe there's a little bit more to that story than what is being portrayed. We have small children. We love Homewood. We lived on East Glenwood for eight years before we moved to West Glenwood. That's how much we love the area. If we had realized what we were moving in across from, I can tell you that I would have never purchased our house on West Glenwood. I think it is a detriment to the street, a detriment to the safety of the neighbors, and I'm just grateful that we're here today, and I hope that you all will take the action that needs to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. For that, then I will close the public hearing and ask for any questions or comments from council.
I've got one. I've, we, we run into this. Typically, it's with someone who's trying to do it themselves and can't really perform the job of a general contractor. My confusion on this is that Mr. Roberts has a company. I see his signs here and there that he's a general contractor and knows how to make this work. And I'm just confused about why it's been so difficult for a general contractor to complete this job that could be completed in 90 to 120 days, if, if everybody shows up and he pays the subs and they get it done. And so I'm, I, I don't get it. I don't get how a general contractor can allow this to go on since 2006. It makes no sense to me unless there's no real intent to really make it happen.
Well, the public hearing is already closed. Anybody else?
I would, I would just like to reiterate that, you know, I've been, I've been talking to these neighbors, and it's not like I don't go, I don't drive down West Glenwood. I think all of us do all the time. And this house has been in the same state for all these years. And yes, they did put metal on part, part of the roof in the last couple of weeks after this public hearing was set. But that is, that does not say to me that this is a good faith effort. I think, like Mr. Cash said, I think that was an effort to stave this decision off. And the fact is, if we make the decision tonight, he has 30 days, or 60 days.
Thirty.
Thirty days to do what he needs to do if he wants to get this not to be abated. So that's 30 days that he can get his subs back out there and do all the work and get it done. But I think that, at this point, after the last three years and all of the things that have happened, I think the right thing to do is to vote to abate this house tonight, and I would make that motion.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Nels. I'll, I used to be the Ward Four rep, so I'll, I'll mention this. I started hearing about this house when I was still a Ford, a Ward Four rep. It's been going on that long that, that I've been hearing about this. So it has been a while. I walk past that house every morning. And so I, I understand the frustration and, and sharing the frustration that it's, that it's taken this long for anything to really get done on this house. And I agree with Ms. Smith, that there's, there's a 30-day period before we can do any, the city can do anything with it, even, even with, if we make this decision tonight. So I think there's, that window is still present for Mr. Roberts if he wants it. So that's my comment. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and will be Resolution 22118. All right. Next item, 230622, Public Hearing Continued from July 11, 2022, to Consider Declaring the Property Located at 464 Cornelius Drive a Public Nuisance Due to a Violation of Ordinance 1910 and 1750 Excessive Growth. This is brought to us by Scott Cook, our code enforcement officer. Since this, we got a report from Public Safety last time, so the public hearing is already open because it was continued. Mr. Cook, you want to give us an update?
Oh, yes. If you recall, last council meeting when this was heard, at the last minute, the gentleman, the owner, Philip Daniels of 424, 464 Cornelius Drive, made some effort to get the front yard mowed, and, and that was brought in by a neighbor. Pictures of that. I asked y'all to carry it over, which you did. Since that time, I Since that time, I was able to reach Mr. Daniels and tell him that we're not quite done with it and pointed out some of the other areas. See that, you know, the last, last picture we had, you couldn't hardly see the signs. So that was this morning. Did some work in the back, but still have some issues on the side of the house. So reaching out to Mr. Daniels and informing him of what's still needed to be done. He was unsure exactly when he could get it done. The other he hired out, he would just have to get to this, to the gentleman who did the first work and see when he could get it done. So I guess our options are, you know, if you feel like that it's a nuisance, we can go ahead and cite it that way, vote that way. And if that's the case, then what happens is he still has the opportunity to come on the property and abate it himself before we do. That's actually what happened on Bagby Drive. They're up there cleaning it now, although y'all abate, declared it a public nuisance. So I'm working with them, could easily work with them, or y'all can carry it over.
Yeah. I'm a little disappointed that in the two weeks in between, he has not gotten the whole thing taken care of.
Well, I was just able to reach him today, so.
Well, I.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that, but, but, I mean, he didn't know about get trying, that he was supposed to get it done.
He got the letter and never called me and.
Yeah. So I, that's, you know, a little frustrating at least to me. But let me do this. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask any comments from council.
I will say I've spoken to a couple of the neighbors, including the Ramys. Mr. Ramey is the one who brought in the information about how he had connected him with his yard man. And then I spoke to another neighbor who lives a little bit further away on Cornelius. And they were very pleased with the initial progress. They do want to see some additional work, but they feel like he is making a good faith effort to get it done. So if I, if it was up to me, I would say, let's carry it over and let him, because he is working with Mr. Ramey's yard man, who Mr. Ramey also communicates with. So I think they'll make sure he understands that it is a priority to get it done. That would be my lean, but I'm not the only person here, so.
Mr. Stent? Mr. Cook, you mentioned that there's also a timeframe where he could still abate it before the city does. What, so we just talked about for condemnation, it's 30 days. What is it in this circumstance?
The way the ordinance reads is basically if y'all were to declare it a public nuisance tonight, the homeowner has up until we step foot on the property to clean it up himself. So there's no real timeframe. I can work with that, working with the homeowner.
So the short answer is there's no required time period, but there's some flexibility in it.
Right. And if you go by Counselor Smith and, and carry it over, then I can reach out to him and say, hey, you know, I carried it over, let's get it done in the next two weeks.
I will carry this item over without objection, but I would ask that you contact him and let him know that I do not expect it to be carried over again. And we do expect that in two weeks, this will be completely resolved.
I agree. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right. And just so everyone's clear, the public hearing on that is closed. We're just carrying over the item. Next item, 020722. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a signed variance at 2709 19th Place South. Brought to us by Mike, Mike Walker and Wyatt Pugh. And we will, we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. The committee met last week and voted five to zero to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendations pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing. And I see Mr. Walker. Sorry, jumped the gun. That's okay. No, you're, I'm glad you did. If you will, just, just give us your name for the record.
I'm Mike Walker.
And if you will, just sort of explain what, what you're asking for here.
Yes. Purchased the building two years ago at 19th Place South and want to get the okay for a signed variance. You can see in the picture, I got two main tenants. One is a CrossFit gym, which my son owns and his wife Kate that run it, and she's also a teacher. And then I have another main tenant that's Northern Lights Chiropractic, which is right to the right. And Helena, who's the owner of that is here. And that is, there's a door there, that's her main entrance. No clients for the gym itself are to enter through that door. It's through the roll up doors. So my wife and I actually painted this sign, jumped the gun on this. It's the only place you can put as far as a wall in order for the clients to know where to enter the gym because the door is up all the time. The actual sign itself is to code as far as the lettering and size, but the code does say it needs to be on the front, which that would, I would not want the clients knowing to go in that entrance there, but to here. And this is the parking also for the gym. So I'm asking for a variance that this would be okay to do. And to go up there because it's for the gym itself, Redefine Fitness, it's the, it's the logo and that they would know this is where they would enter in and go and not the other door.
And I know Mr. Pugh isn't here tonight. Ms. Smith, do you, the variance is for the location.
That is all, everything else, everything else about it is compliant except for the fact that it's not on the storefront. That's, that's, it's just a location variance.
Not for that.
Oh, well, no, it, for the, for the, what, the chiropractor does have a sign.
She does have a sign.
But yeah, and it is, it is on the front of her, of the building, but she, her, their entrance is on the side, so.
All right. Anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Come on up and, and go ahead and put your name down and you can say as much or as little as you want, but go ahead and put your name on the list and tell us, go ahead and give it to us for the record.
I don't have much to say, but I fully support that the sign is on the side since mine is on the front of the building. It would be confusing if both of them were at the front.
If you will, just give us your name for the record.
Helena Bendixstatter.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here to speak for or against it?
We can make this a long process for us time. My name is William Johnson. I live at 220 Point Sand Drive. I just, I'm in support of it. I understand the guidelines and the reasons for it, but because of hardship, being that the sign is within all the other requirements, I ask that you approve it.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I'd move to approve. Second.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Andrus. I missed the second, but I heard various ones. Was it Andy? Second from Mr. Gualtney. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and will be Resolution 22119. All right. Which brings us to the next item, 030722. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a signed variance at 273 Lake Shore Parkway. Brought to us by Megan Ellis of Advanced Signs in Chipotle and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. The committee met last week, voted five to zero to refer this item out, back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrus. And I will say that my son is loving the fact that we have a Chipotle in Homewood. He's eaten there about 40 times already.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And Ms. Ellis?
I'm Megan Ellis. I'm with Advanced Sign Lighting, and I am here to try to get this approved for the rear and the side elevation signs at Chipotle. They have the front elevation, which faces Lake Shore Parkway, already approved and installed. And we have the rear sign facing parking lot and other businesses in the shopping center. And the side elevation, it faces Wildwood Parkway. You can actually see the side of that building coming into the entrance of the shopping center. And when you turn onto the, the main road in between the shopping centers in the building of Chipotle.
Okay. Ms. Smith, correct me if I'm wrong. The variance is for two additional wall signs? Is that the deal?
Yes, it is for two additional wall signs. And, and we did, in the meeting last week, someone did, I believe Ms. Nelms brought up the fact that there was a monument sign out in the front. And it is indeed there. It is, it'll, which is allowed. One monument sign is allowed. So currently, they have one existing monument sign, which is illuminated at the front of the building. And then also the wall sign with the name of the restaurant on the front of the building as well, both facing Lake Shore. So the, these two additional wall signs, one is for the side and one is for the rear.
And just so I know, the front of the building is the side that faces Lake Shore?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? So I'm going to close the public hearing and questions or comments from council?
Do we have a picture of the actual building, like the way the signs would look on the actual building? I think you had those pictures last week. Can I see those again?
Yeah.
You have a Ms. Smith?
There we go.
I think that one's the back.
Mr. Wolverton, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I love Chipotle like any other probably college age kid, but it just, it just seems a little bit excessive to have that monument sign plus the sign on the front of the building, both facing Lake Shore. I drove past it several times in the last couple of weeks. Monument sign seems pointless to me because it's way down elevation wise from the street. You can see the signage on the front of the building just fine right there. There, I mean, they're probably 20 yards from each other. Be easier for me to support it if, you know, we were talking about swapping, moving one of those.
Just to clarify, we didn't do the monument sign.
Yeah, and I will say, I mean, the thing about the monument sign is the monument sign's allowed. They're allowed to have a monument sign plus a wall sign. So the, the signs that are there currently are already allowed. So I think that we're not addressing those signs.
Could the monument sign have been located somewhere else, though?
I mean, I wouldn't imagine they'd want to locate it much differently for them where it is because it's illuminated and it shows the people, the traffic coming either way on Lake Shore, that that's where they are. But again, those aren't the signs that we're dealing with tonight. So, I mean, certainly we could say four signs is too many signs. And one of these signs, we don't have to allow. But the signs that are currently there that are allowed are going to stay. So I think what we're dealing with now is whether we approve two additional signs or whether we think two additional signs is too many and we should scale that number down.
I think that's inaccurate.
And B is on the side of the building, is that correct?
B's on the side and C's on the back? Is that right?
You're seeing the drive through window of B.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Is there a dumpster on the back? Is, no, a part of it back there.
Mr. Smith says yes. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, of the applicant, you know, in committee last week, we discussed if there was, you know, only a partial approval of the request. So basically, one sign as opposed to the two variances you're requesting, would you have a preference in which sign is approved?
I asked my customer and they asked for my suggestion. And I actually went there when I left the meeting last week. And in my opinion, they're both very much needed. The one on the face is Wildwood. It looks like a blank building entering the parking lot and coming from there. And you can't see the rear sign until you get to the back. Now, when you're close to the other shopping centers, you don't know, and that's where you enter is on the rear. So it's hard to say which I would prefer, but if you're coming from the other direction, the other entrance, you're not going to know until you pass Chipotle what that building is. So.
I mean, I'll say that's, that's why I was asking about relocating the monument sign because to me, it makes more sense for it to be on that back frontage where the drive is.
Again, we're not dealing with the monument sign because it's already there.
Right. No, I understand.
And I, I, because I did, I, I drove over there to kind of see, like, kind of where I could see what from. And I will tell you, you can see the monument sign when you come in from the side.
Yes, you can.
So to me, that almost serves as your side sign. To me, it would, if, if it were me and it were my business, it would be more important for me to have the sign on the back of the building because like you said.
I did suggest the rear.
It's blank right now. So if you're coming in from the back, you truly can't see because the monument sign's in the front of the building. But if you're coming in from that side, you can see the monument sign from that driveway on the side. So if it were me, and, and I honestly do think, I think four signs is a little unnecessary with the monument sign because really on that side of the building, it's, I, I feel like at that point, you know where you are and, and you're parking in the parking lot, or you've driven in from the back and you've seen the sign on the back of the building. So that's, that's my opinion and, and it would probably be my motion to approve, is it C that's on the back? It would probably be my.
C is on the back?
C is the rear.
Yeah. It would probably be my motion to approve sign C on the rear of the building, but not sign B on the side of the building.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Nelms. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and will be Resolution 22120. All right. 210522. Request to present fiscal year in September 30, 21. Audit results per fiscal policy guidelines and more pertinently, that was, we just had to accept that. More pertinently, there is a motion to make the transfer of, I believe, $60,000 to the Rainy Day fund.
67,339, actually.
67,339. All right. And I should have just started with this, but Ms. Smith, you want to give the report from Finance, which is probably what I just asked you?
So after hearing the report from Mr. Brigette and Ms. Salter, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approving, well, to accept the report and then to approve a transfer of $67,339 from our Bryant Bank Public Fund Investment to our Raymond James account for, for economic uncertainty. And we voted five to zero, four to zero to approve that. And I don't know who made the motion or who seconded it, but it was motioned and seconded.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and will be Resolution 22121. All right. That brings us to the committee referral, the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of that agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Gere. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, 10 to zero. Which brings us to other new business. 120722. Request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances at 1831 28th Avenue South, Suite 175. Brought to us by Taylor Hughes of Soho's Taco and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for August 8th at 6:00 PM. 130722. Request to set a public hearing for consideration of a, of sign variances at 333 Greens Springs Highway. Brought to us by Brenda Daniel of Daniel Signs, Chase Bank and Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that one for August 8th at 6:00 PM. 140722. Request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances at 1722 27th Port South. Brought to us by Dogtopia and Wyatt Pugh. That one will also be set for August 8th at 6:00 PM. 150722. Request to set a public hearing for consideration of annexation and acceptance of annexation petition for Board of Education property into the city of Homewood. Brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. This public hearing needs to be set for the first meeting in November, is that correct? Yeah, I'll explain in a second. Yeah, I think it's going to be the 14th. Mr. President?
Do we, do we have the address of this property?
So, yeah, let me kind of explain what's going on. Yeah. So it's, what, what's going on here is that the Board of, there's a little triangle that the Board of Education has already purchased, but it was in the city of Estavia, is that correct? And the city of Estavia has deannexed. It's not a big piece of land, but the, the Board of Education has now applied to have that, have the city of Homewood annex that land that the city of Estavia deannexed. All we're doing tonight is setting the public hearing one and two, accepting the petition to consider the annexation. We're not approving the annexation. In other words, this will, we'll, we'll still have this item go through committee and all that and we'll have the, obviously, the public hearing has to be set a pretty good distance away. But for tonight, all that's happening is we accept the petition, which just means we're going to consider the annexation question. All right. So with that, any other questions or comments? If not, I would enter. All right, so with that, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second to accept the petition. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero, and will be resolution 22122. All right, which brings us to our last item, 16-0722, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of July 12, 2022 through July 25, 2022, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. I believe Mr. Harden still has the honors?
Oh, yeah. So I did have a chance to go through everything, had a number of questions that Mr. Brigette answered, and so I make a motion that we approve the voucher for the period of July 12, 2022 through July 25, 2022.
Second.
All right, a motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero, and will be resolution 22123. All right, which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Mayor is not here. Unless you got anything, Mr. Bischoff? Then we'll start with Mr. Gualtney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's see. We have one item on the public safety agenda that we just had some reports on last week. Do we feel the need to meet for 19-0322, the traffic calming updates? Anybody? We can give it another week then. All right, in that case, I will not call Public Safety, and I have no comments.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Yes, I would just like to bring to the attention the Birmingham Now article about Union Missionary Baptist Church and their fundraising efforts. And just to say that I think they'll be fundraising for quite some time. They are using a structures report provided by our Historic Preservation Commission, and they are still in the process of prioritizing some of the work, and then they have some other work that they want to do to their organ and some other things that weren't a part of that study. But I, I would just direct everybody to the Birmingham Now article. I'm not sure what date that was, but if you just Google it, it's on the web and easy to find, and they talk a lot about their, what they're doing, the history of the church, and what they hope to accomplish, and they also give information about how to donate. So it's a worthy cause, and a lot of effort has gone into it, so for corporations or private citizens that, the community who want to help, that's a good way to do it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamon?
Sure, I just want to thank the Vulcan Sun Parade Group, Barry Smith, for leading those efforts, Sean Fitzwater for painting a great statue of Vulcan Patriot Pride. I love the community support around it. I think it's a great way to give us another reason to come to Patriot Park, and I'm just appreciative of all the efforts that went into making that happen. I also want to thank the folks at Little Professor Bookstore for allowing me to read to the kids on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Do you happen to know, Alex, if I carried over two items last time? I'm not sure if either one of them was.
I think the gravel lot, they're planning on coming back, correct?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't clear on exactly how long they were planning to come back.
Yeah, I, I think they're anticipating being back next week.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and set.
Public Works after Finance.
After Finance, and Finance has a lot of stuff on their agenda. All right. Yeah, so in conjunction with the unveiling of Vulcan, of the Vulcan at Patriot Park, there was also another street festival kind of put on by the Neighborhood Association and several sponsors, so we want to thank them again for their efforts. This was kind of a, I think somewhat of an ad lib effort. They wanted to try and find something to do during the middle of summer. I think it might become a mainstay where we have something June, July, and August, because they've had June and August for, for several years now, so unfortunately, we had sick kids, we weren't there, but I know everybody that went had a good time. I also wanted to just let anybody know that might be interested that Birmingham Southern's basketball camps, which are typically at Birmingham Southern's campus, a couple of them are actually here in Homewood at the West Homewood Courts. I know our kids are planning to attend. And head coach is, is a well-known, well-respected Homewoodian, so encourage anybody that's interested in learning a little bit about basketball and enjoying that last week before school to sign up for that. I think that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. Just wanted to remind everybody that the Beautification Board's upcoming meeting in Au, in August is a good opportunity to attend and see if you're interested in joining. We currently have two open slots, one at large and one for Ward Two, so encourage people who are willing to serve to, you know, participate in a meeting, listen in about what the board does, and hopefully express your interests and come join the team. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I'll set Special Issues for after public works. We have a few sign items, it looks like. And then thank you to Mr. Alamon. His family came out for the unveiling on Saturday afternoon. I really had no idea if anybody was actually gonna come, so was relieved when they did, and it was a lot of fun. We had some, some neighbors, and I appreciate the West Homewood Neighborhood Association kind of letting me Bogart a little bit of their time before their event started, but it, the statue, if you haven't been over, looks great. Sean did a really amazing job. There were moments I wasn't sure, oh, yeah, there he is, if it was gonna happen, but it did, and he did a, he did a bang-up job, so just really excited, and he'll be in Patriot Park for three years, and there is some discussion from park folk that at the end of that three years, we would love maybe to keep him, so we'll see how that, that goes, but we were excited for that. And then the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission, because I feel like I've talked about them a lot tonight, is having our final meeting about the resurvey of the west side of Rosedale, the historic district over there, on, at the Lee Center on August the 4th, which is next Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. We're going to be publicizing that online, and also, we're gonna be doing flyers and putting them up in some public locations, so that people will be able to see that and know about it. And our consultant will be here to present the results of her, of her work, and that is all for me.
Okay. Ms. Nelms?
Yes, I just want to share and congratulate that the Homewood High School Star Spangled Girls won first place in their dance competition in Mississippi. They've been fighting to get their superior rating and their super superior rating back for a couple of years, and they got it this weekend. So just want to congratulate them and share that with y'all.
Wonderful news, thank you. Ms. Andrus?
Yes, set P and D to follow Special Issues next Monday night. That is all I have tonight.
Mr. Harden?
I know some of you guys may know who Mike Milliken is. He's, was the guy that would ride around that trike all the time, and he's had COVID, and unfortunately, passed away this afternoon from COVID. So Mike was always a smiling face and a, someone you wanted to greet and enjoyed having around the, you know, he would ride it everywhere. But unfortunately, COVID got him. As JJ said, we thought he was getting better, but apparently not.
Thank you for letting us know. Sad news. All right, one final thing. This is my fault that we haven't done it yet, so we're gonna have to go through a couple of steps here before we, before we adjourn. We need to amend the agenda to, will our next number be 17-07, Ms. Salter?
That's the one we did for the fails, it'll be 18.
18. 18-0722, which will be request to authorize the mayor to sign releases for the opioid litigation. We dealt with this in committee, and we've gotten some settlements that are essentially controlled by the state, but we do need to have the mayor sign those by the end of the month. So with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include that item.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero. Correct, add it to Other New Business. All right, and now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 10 to zero, and will be resolution 22124, and I apologize for having. Huh? Sure. So I apologize for leaving that off and having to do it that way. And I don't think I have anything else tonight, so with that, we will adjourn, and we will be back here in two weeks.